All right, it is six thirty. I hereby call the Swisher City Council meeting to order. Uh, we are here in City Hall as is normal for us now. Please call roll. Klein. Henick.
Here.
Bojil.
Here.
Roder.
Here.
Stagg.
Here.
I'm gonna motion over the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You wanna post? All right, we will start with public comment. I know Economic Alliance is on later as is the uh parking committee stuff, so if you have stuff on that, we'll wait till later in the agenda. Otherwise, other public comments. One on my end. All right. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So I've got a question. Can you do that now or?
We can have discussion after we make a motion.
Okay.
So.
Second. Discussion.
On the, actually the lap B, it pertains to the moose's letters that were sent out on, pertain to the grass. I've got, I've got a concern to the extent that, now, we have a right of way on all the land that we annexed into it, like out west to north. Okay. And I understand with the letters and they're, they're appropriate. I got no problem with that. But I just wondered if we should change our ordinances to a certain degree. Orders pertain to city property. We are annexing in resident agriculture. Those ditches were never meant to be mowed. And I hate to tell our, our citizens that they have to mow it and get hurt because a lot of the ditches that, majority of them aren't able to mow. The only mowing we could do is if we could get the tractor we used to have with the disc mower, six to eight foot disc mower. You get to keep the tractor on the road and you can drop that disc mower down and you can mow that ditch. You'll never get the, anybody to mow all those from the fence line to the road. It's impossible. It can't be done without rolling the tractor over.
Regardless of whether or not it's tang this agricultural or residential, it's still city property.
Yeah, I understand that. What I'm saying is the ordinance was, pertains to a suburban area where there's no, no ditches. We're, we're annexing in agriculture ground out, ground out in the country. Those ditches were never meant, meant to mow. They're not, they, they can't mow them.
They can hire somebody to mow them.
You can't hire somebody to mow them. You'll roll the tractor over every time on that.
So you think we can mow them but a professional mowing company can't mow them?
No, I'm not saying we can, we can't mow it either. What I'm saying is the John Deere tractor with the disc mower, they're traded into that mini excavator. That's what we need back again because it had, it had a disc mower. Justin, how, was that a six or eight foot disc mower that you remember? They go six, seven, and eight, I think.
I think it was eight.
Was it eight foot?
I think so.
What you can do is you keep the tractor on the road and on a busy highway for safety purposes, you would keep another guy with a, with a truck with flashing lights behind him for safety purposes. And just keep the tractor on the road off, on the shoulder. You drop the disc down, you can mow the ditch right up to the road and into the middle. And we even need, we, even city property has got grass now, you've got grass now by the, by the burn pile you can't get to it to mow or you'll roll the tractor over. You got standing on the edge of the road.
Well, regardless, our ordinance is written the way it's written. So if you want to change the ordinance, you need to submit it as an actionable item on another.
Yeah, I understand that. That's what I'm saying. If there's interest because I don't wanna, I guess I don't wanna be a part of demanding people mow those ditches because they're gonna be possible to mow without rolling the tractor. If somebody says they can do it, I gotta run him a more, then come borrow if they wanted to show me how to do it.
Right, Justin.
I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't know if we're necessarily telling them they have to mow it either. We're just saying that we're gonna, we're not going to mow it going forward, right?
It says we have to mow. Didn't know that last thing you asked, but I think it imply, I thought it implied that either they mow it or we do it and bill them.
Well, what we're trying to, what we're trying to get at is that, I mean, if you look at like Swisher View Drive on the hill, I think it's Fisher's, you know? That was something that we ended up uh we eaten last year because it got so high, it was blocking the signs. And then we built them because since they're annexed in, they're responsible to maintain it up to the road. And so we're, you know, that, to me, that property, us doing that property for them is, is no different than us doing that property for the people that are still in city limits outside of town. The ditches that we're talking about, we're just, we just talk about it and because it's that, it is their responsibility to maintain that, we're just basically telling them that starting on a certain date, the city's not gonna mow those ditches any, any longer because that's your responsibility.
Yeah, but also I think the owner doesn't say that they have to do it by a certain date or we do it going. Am I right?
After August first failure to undertake the right of way will result in city.
What I'm saying is, I guess that's the least we can do for our citizens is to mow. If they had a tractor on the blade, it wouldn't take you half a day to do every one of them.
That's half a day that he's not doing other work that needs to be done.
Is he, is he that busy? They, they can't find half a day or a couple hours? I, I don't wanna get into his schedule, but I'm saying it is, we've done, they've done it for years. That's why that tractor was here.
Again, the council cannot take action because this is not an actionable item. So if you feel this strongly about it, put it on an agenda so the council can actually talk about it. They can't do anything today.
I did, I'm stating my concerns today. That's what I wanna know.
That's fine, but they can't respond to you.
I know that, but I wanna know if there's enough interest to do it. Because that was, that had been done for years. We've done it for the citizens for years. Those streets have been mowed.
Again, put it on agenda so they can talk to you.
Okay, put it on the agenda then.
Please email Shelley and let her know that you would like.
I wanna know if there's enough interest before I go to that work.
Just put it on the agenda.
Okay, all right. That's all I need to know.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, can I, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, Swisher Economic Alliance, they're here to talk about branding strategy. Hello?
Nikki Henick and Sania is here today. We are part of the Swisher Economic Alliance, which is the newer organization for the community after recognizing that we wanted to build an alliance for local businesses. And today we want to ask if you wanted to partner with us doing a branding strategy for the city of Swisher. So I know last year you guys talked about redoing logos and redoing some of the branding and it kinda got tabled. And we have an opportunity to receive grants to do this branding. So we've received a estimate for twelve hundred dollars by Benson and Hecker, so Robert, Robin Benson. And she's able to do a full branding concept for the city. So I guess we were just curious if you guys wanted to partner with us in that.
Uh, I do wanna say these ladies have been working on this for quite a while and we are thinking in the best terms of the city. Partnering with them to get better branding in town is something the council has been discussing for a few years, so.
So she'll be working on drafting up a couple designs, should have them ready on beginning of July. And then she would also come up with color schemes and fonts and all of that. So we just, basically we're asking, we don't wanna put twelve hundred and, you know, fifty dollars into this project if you guys will just say no and we'll come with the logos and stuff.
Questions?
There's also grant money available from the county. So we're, we're partnering with Sarah Thompson. Is she online? Okay, and Sarah Thompson's online to answer some of those questions. She's with um the Greater Iowa City Inc., which is part of the county. And the county has also funds available for, to reduce some of the signage. So town signage, about thirty-two hundred dollars, I think, available once the branding is finished.
Can we use any of those funds, the community fund of Johnson County that we've got funds in?
If we have a board, yes, but we don't have a board.
So that, that's our money basically sitting there then, right?
Well, it's not your money. It's
Well.
that organization's money.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
And without a board, nobody can touch it. I can't touch it. I can't touch it. She can't touch it.
Okay, the city can't, the city don't have a board? The city has to have boards, like you said.
City has to have a whole board. Well, a voting majority.
So do they have one in the past?
Mm-hmm.
And disbanded?
What happened?
And then just stopped showing up.
You need five people, right?
Five people to vote, seven people to.
We received one application.
Just today.
Yeah.
Good. So we got one potential.
I know there was about seven thousand dollars out of there, but this last year for that artist market.
No, that came from the county. That was a different organization.
That wasn't out of this county here?
Not out of that account. It was out of a different organization.
No, it solely goes out of this one, yeah.
No. Do you have questions for them though? Is this something you can.
Have you received funding already from the county, you said?
No, we haven't. They, they haven't, and Sarah can speak to this. They haven't actually received their funding for this yet. So I think in July, they'll receive the funding for it and then we'll apply for it.
So what, what obligation does this, the city have then?
Yeah, so nothing as of right now, just a willingness to partner with us so that if we do bring the brand into you, you guys would be open to working with it and adopting some of the branding.
Uh, you guys could potentially also help cover some of the cost if you wanted to split it with them, if you wanted to cover it. It is something that the city has talked about wanting for quite a while, so.
Whatever happened to those logos that we came up with?
We still have them. We still have the rights to them.
Is this something that we should share with them to?
Did you guys see them last year when they're online? Yeah.
I don't know if there's anything you wanna do or not do, but.
And we can always get your digital files and. Are you guys open you need to partnering with them on this idea?
Do we need to make the motion? Do you need a motion?
It's up to them, Michelle.
I think we would like a motion, just so we, something set in stone.
Motion to partner with the Swisher Economic Alliance for branding.
Can I get a second?
I was looking, I was looking at that, but I, I got a question first. Is this, financially, does this obligate us at all, this?
The motion?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so the financial will come later, right? Okay.
Yes.
Other questions?
And then after we've received the branding from Robin, we'll come with you with her concepts. And I don't know if we can do a collaborative choosing of the concepts that she presents in, in maybe August.
I think it'd be a work session.
Sure, yeah.
I think it could be a work session then, I think, so.
Other questions, cameras? All right, all those in favor of partnering with us?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you ladies.
Thank you.
All right, uh Downtown Park Area Project. Uh, the parking committee met last week. We had a very productive meeting, so thank you to everybody who came for the parking committee. Tearing down the two buildings here behind the park plus the trees. Gravelling the whole thing for future parking on um Adam's professional opinion. Don't chip seal it yet, let it settle in a year or so. Um, but eventually had a nice additional parking with ten to twelve more spots is kinda what the engineer was thinking, which we absolutely need. Chief Sexton and I walked through the alley today, discussed all the stuff we're going to require department. We've already been in contact with the EMA. Everybody is willing to move to the old shop building here behind City Hall. So they have no problem with vacating the garage, so we can tear that down. Um, I also talked to Parks and Rec last week about anything they have left in their old building. We're going to come in July, make sure everything's taken out that they need for Parks and Rec, so that way that building can be emptied out. So that's where we are. If council chooses to forward with all of this, um, plus Adam was nice enough to put together some cost estimates. Um, so we would have to go out for bid. This is kinda what he was thinking we would be looking at. Questions?
Shelley will phone with this comment.
Yeah, so there could be, the potential could either on a general fund or local option sales tax fund. Um, currently the general fund has a balance of two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Local option has about eighty-three, eighty-four thousand dollars. Um, so depending on who has the money. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it, and what we're talking about is just the buildings and this, everything here?
It's just those.
Not the rest of it, right?
No.
Just the two buildings, the trees?
The trees, plus the trees.
All right, Adam, didn't you bring up like utilities?
Yep, we have, H R Green has contacted Alliance. We have not received comment back from them yet. But um if, if it is in public right of way, they would pay for the relocation. So we're, we are gonna talk to them and work to figure out if it's in or out of the right of way.
What about the handle?
For a media count?
To, to counter sell slopes.
I know Tim was making those, Tim Cusworth is making those contacts. So he told me, he reached out to everyone. We're, go back to the hill. So, but it's the same thing. It's in the right of way. They would need to relocate it, so.
That one definitely isn't right of way.
Or relocate it.
That one isn't right of way, if you're questioning.
Yeah. Then they would relocate it.
So still, even if Alliance comes out and says we're not moving that pole, couldn't we still tear it down and fit in nine spots out of ten?
Yeah, potentially just leave that nine spot.
You know, that would be a non-parking spot, but.
Yeah.
That's what.
But rather they moved it.
Rather than us sitting here and saying, well, it's tabled till we hear from Alliance, yeah.
So as of today, where everything sits, we could move along this?
Yeah, everybody that would be impacted has been notified other than Alliance, which potentially maybe they move the pole, but they don't.
Justin, are we gonna need a dumpster to empty that?
No, absolutely not. You put it on whoever wins the demo contract to haul it all away.
So we're gonna get, we're gonna get what we need out of it and then the stuff that needs to go will be left in there.
Yeah, they'd be on whoever wins the contract and haul it all away.
Yeah.
So are we on seven or eight bids?
Seven. So, questions? Do you guys like what the parking committee came up with this idea? Do you have other concerns that we didn't think of? Nothing?
I think, I think you said that the siren would be moved probably too, right? Eventually.
Eventually, that'll be come at budget time. That has to be budgeted before.
Which that sets back further than the Alliance pole does anyway.
Yeah.
But if we're already talking about physically moving or putting something new on there, why would we move the pole at the same time?
Justin did mention the cameras would need to be moved as well. So he was already aware of that. But we can move them to the other building.
They could come in the trench from this way going out, so they could come back this way pretty easy, so.
Let's hit the trench and head that way.
All right, let's do number eight then. See proposals for downtown park project. Do you guys want to go up to me?
Yeah, I think we should.
I should put out to bid the park proposal or.
I'd, I'd motion we move forward with all of those, put it out for bids and.
Second one?
Second one.
Uh, any discussion on the bid? Oh, yes.
Melissa.
So um, since it is, it could potentially be under the quote limit. So just, just take care of that. We won't have to prepare any plans for you. H R Green can also provide the asbestos testing. Do you want us to do it instead of contractor? Or you don't know how that work.
It wouldn't surprise me if there's asbestos in the one in the middle, probably not in the rest, but so. That whole means kind of whole.
Wasn't it anybody of a four or nineteen seventy's?
It's still not here to be, right? It's just a little hole. What's your testing fee though?
Back, we have to, we just discussed this before I came out here. So we have to go downstairs and talk to our homeowners. I know they've done it for another building or two here in the city before, but we can get that to prove that we can do it.
We'll be asbestos, we'll pull the asbestos test then off of this project, get numbers, gonna be charging Justin off of you. We can get numbers for the asbestos test and keep it separate in the project, that the contractor's not overlapping with that, just in case there is anything else. Because we can get testing if we're feeling three qualified H R Green, oh, ATC, Paul Daniel, no. No problem. Just see what their numbers are for all that. You go, just the same thing whoever's a little bit, like with the demo project, we'll just have one test.
So we get two bids?
Yeah, that's easy.
Two dollars?
Sure.
I don't think I need to, do I?
No.
Good. For your minutes. I'm just, Justin, I'm just doing the action. Motion in a second to send it out. Details don't want to be in our minutes.
But with.
With the negation of, from my budgetary, um, we'll move lying item ten from the demolition proposal.
Cody, since you made a motion, are you okay with splitting your motion? And are you okay with the second?
Okay, before, uh, Melissa, whether you and Tim look at what we said, export six inches, import three inches of some base. I just put a rough of like three inch minus. You good with that? Since we're gonna do a fair private quote, we just need to kinda have something for Justin to actually, or Shelley to work out for Justin to push for an actual quote.
I think so. Tim, we kinda said that we'd talk about it all tomorrow and button everything up and finalize it.
If we pass this, then the details of it, they're in, they'll work out tomorrow before it goes out for public quotes.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think it's fine though. I mean, we're, we're preparing it for future chip seals.
Correct. Correct.
And so proposal out by Wednesday, do that quote. Oh, well, if you guys could talk tomorrow, out by Wednesday.
Get it out Wednesday. Proposals due back.
We need to get on the eight, but there is a holiday.
Yeah, they need to come back on the tenth. Two weeks is pretty standard. Even with the holidays.
Do you want two weeks even though we wouldn't be until the twenty-second? We want three.
Or two.
Just two.
So we're gonna take action for the first thing.
Which you're still talking about this project. It's gonna be a couple months down the road.
We wouldn't accept bids.
Testing.
Yeah.
Correct, which is why.
Then they, yeah, I mean, they're not gonna be able to come in into your calendar next week. They're gonna be out.
They're gonna be out until September.
Months. Yeah.
You said bid back on July tenth?
Due at a time we can set that, probably tomorrow for long, but two, two weeks is pretty standard.
Does everyone know what they are voting on? All in favor of going out for bids for the two separate bids?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Very exciting, your ladies. Uh, chip seal downtown parking lot along Rose Avenue, the little park, parking lot over there. Um, this was requested by Adam last week in our meeting. So I did get that.
It skips to ten and.
I don't care.
Yeah.
It skips to ten.
Oh, yeah, like we didn't add that any of attachment. Yeah, there was this one thing. Um, so Melissa, I don't know if you want to, what Tim had said.
Yep, um, we took measurements and it would not include chip sealing the area in part of the buildings. So just the area out here we installed.
Sounds better.
Um, our estimates, one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And we would have then with the twenty-twenty-four pavement rehab project, a remaining budget of four thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Which Tim said we could extend the rehab of Swisher View Drive to the south, just to utilize that full fifty thousand.
Yeah, so you guys had approved a street improvement. They weren't quite gonna hit fifty thousand. We can use some of that for this parking lot between. So it isn't changing any of our budget stuff.
So ideally this would be done before whoever gets the bid. You know, jumping down the hoop thing if we discuss it. So that it gets all striped that month ideally.
Yeah. Yeah, I would never spend.
Whoever has to stripe using their.
Wait until it's.
After we get that chip sealed, yeah.
So we do it all.
Motion forward.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of chip sealing the little parking lot?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yep, uh, striping downtown. Um, so H R Green had done a quick estimate and our parking striped lines are not consistent. If we made them the correct size, just striping adds ten more spots. Plus we have stripped little parking lots next to the park where people don't park correctly anyway. It would help the deputies when they're in town, making sure people are parking correctly. I know we have a problem on Akaba. Won't know how to park in front of the libraries, little green space. So it would, it would help people that are coming to our town people park their cars and all that kind of stuff. I also think Shelley and I were talking, we really need to stripe, um, that too, but still talking downtown, uh, the stop signs need the wide, wide stripe.
Stop signs.
Yeah, whatever it's called. Plus, the two sides of the railroad on a street should really be railroad modified because it was a railroad over a street and we don't have it painted correctly. Um, plus it would correctly paint the handicap parking spots, which we've never had painted correctly in.
Yeah, handicap parking spots.
There is, wait, two, three, two or three?
This is just to seek proposals for.
This is to seek proposals. Um, also Division Street is heavily driven on. It should be kept up way more consistent than we believe we're probably planning on. We said, cities tend to do it every two to three years.
Some do it annually.
Some do it annually with their own crew.
Yeah.
We don't have our, we're volunteers. Um, it's, it's hard to see. People is raining. But again, that's a busy street. So as long as we're striping, we might as well hit Division as well and get that painted for the next two quarters or so. Questions?
I believe it's time to make the thought of construction campaign on your campaign.
Yeah, we're gonna have construction for the next five years though. We can't wait that long.
That's, that's true.
When you put up any, all the stripes on here, all the parking, yeah, here, what about the, what about some of that is on private property, isn't it?
Uh, the ones on, fully on private property would not get stretched because we don't own them.
It's like there's two. Okay, this one I just.
And also like, like trying to dance more, for example, that's gravel. So that won't get straight.
Anything that's not fully the city's and not paid.
That's why, that's why I wanted to, there's two of them, at least two of them on private property.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, I mean, we can always break it out with two. Motion to get proposals for striping downtown and separately Division Street. So we can see a breakout of what the cost is for Division Street and two line items. A second.
Any discussion on the two potential bids?
And just whoever has awarded the bid, make sure that it occurs after it's taken.
After the check. Right. Maybe we want to do the plans.
Yeah.
Maybe we want plans for this, to make sure it.
Absolutely.
Finds by everything M E T C D and also improve renewables, so typically done that, right? Okay. Did Tim mention signs as well? Is there a discussion about that? Those in here.
Yeah, Justin does that, you guys can't do that.
Just stay careful.
Okay, perfect. He's already started and ordered it. Okay. So that was all I had. Other discussion?
That was, that was just my question, so they'll, they'll do plans and then both put it off a bit? Or are they, or for the striping or? Are they gonna do the bid on that too?
Because it, it would be over where you guys put it off a bit. So you guys are straight, yeah.
Or the under.
Shouldn't be at all, so it would be. Especially considering now it's two separate bids, so.
No, it'll be one bid.
But two separate, I think one.
Two lines on the same bid.
Two line items on the same bid.
Yeah, so after you get the plans from them, I'll get the, and start getting bids on it.
Yeah. Other discussion? And estimates, she gave it back. Alright, all in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, number eleven, speed regulations, so when we were digging into some stuff with downtown, we found that there are areas other town that are not twenty-five. Uh, this is where they're all twenty-five. Some of them are marked, some of them are not marked. The roads up by the park are half marked, so we will get them all marked, there are fifteen up there. Downtown is technically supposed to be twenty and none of it is marked, so we need to, if we're going to keep it twenty. Justin will order the signs, we'll get them all put out. You cannot go over twenty, there is a state ordinance that will prevent that. So the other option is to drop to fifteen if you guys so wanted. And then there's a whole list of, in chapter sixty-three on page three eighteen, which is the second one in your bucket. Um, there's a whole other list of twenty mile an hour speed zones. Some of them are in the downtown area, some of them are outside of the downtown area, we could keep them all and add to it. Basically, we need to find anything that's not twenty-five, is what I was saying.
Is there a way to plan this out? I mean, honestly?
Yes. We could write a new chapter sixty-three.
I mean, we got all these random roads that are different. Like, I mean. Yeah, I don't get it.
I assume people up by the park wanted a lower speed limit because of the children?
I get that. I'm, I'm just saying, just in general, like, I don't see an issue with, like, could we just make it simple and set the whole town to twenty? Division Street's twenty-five or?
Yeah, yeah, we could. State code residential is twenty-five, but you can always do more restrictive than what state code is, you just can't do less restrictive. So we could set the entire town to twenty, except for the area around the park to Division.
Yeah, that's true. Because even. Where Swisherview to Oak is twenty-five, I guess. So you could even do all Swisherview's twenty-five and Division's twenty-five, but rest of the town's twenty. I don't know.
Just turn it to the fifteen.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't get how like certain, because yeah, I live right by Allen, I don't know how that one road became fifteen, but Aaron Porter's twenty-five. Which is a shorter road. Yeah, I, I don't know.
It's like random reason to the.
Yeah, and that's what I, that's my biggest thing is, that's what probably makes it more confusing and us having to put up signs everywhere is having all these different paragraphs versus just be more restrictive and set twenty miles an hour through the whole town.
Except Swisherview.
A lot of it's, you go a block and there's another stop sign, so if you think you need it at one block, you know.
You're getting up to twenty-five anyway, yeah.
I see you got ten miles on alleys.
I think that's a state thing, so we couldn't change that.
That's what I'm saying, but I've never seen one of those ten mile, uh, anywhere around here.
Well, how many alleys are, you know? Actual like maintained alleys, I don't know, you know, but.
Two, three?
But we'd actually, I mean, probably have to put, do we have to put a ten mile an hour sign on that, shouldn't we do?
I've never seen a street from the side of an alley.
Yeah, yeah.
But I've never seen really residential unless it's other than twenty-five.
Right.
Yeah, they ordered, yeah, they ordered signs, yeah.
Well, that just breaks a law. Everywhere.
No, I'm putting the list together now.
If what?
Because you wanna, you wanna mark it all to them. I'm just, I was just thinking out loud, if you go twenty everywhere other than certain streets, then you'll have to, I would think you'd wanna.
Mark it.
Mark all of those streets twenty and that would take, that can take a while. Because it's, you know, typically a residential area is twenty-five. You don't have to necessarily mark that, that's state.
Or do we just set everywhere to twenty-five, I don't know.
Well, we can't do downtown, we can't do less restrictive than the state ordinance. So this downtown area would have to be twenty. And most of the area up by the park is already marked fifteen, we just need two more signs, so that would be easy to fix. So mostly, yeah, if you just wanna do the entire town twenty-five except downtown, we'll just mark downtown.
Alright, he's, that's easy.
I'm just trying to think of what is the easiest one for, as we do switch some of these streets that everybody is.
The state residential code is twenty-five.
Like twenty-five.
Why not just switch it to that?
Everything's twenty-five, then we just mark the twenties?
Just mark the twenties and the fifteen and twenty-five.
And then the fifteen, the one fifteen special, over on there.
Do we want to keep Allen Avenue from Division and Third Street fifteen? It's that, it's probably because it's so curvy, that would be my guess.
Well, I wondered if that came in during the Division Street project.
Would they have written that into the ordinance or would they have just?
They would have done a temporary.
Done a temporary thing.
That street used to stop.
Right.
You know, so.
So there's no point in that.
I don't remember it fifteen, twenty years ago. Like, that's why I just saw that fifteen, you know, years back when I started doing the condo project and.
Of course, you can't do over ten over there because kids are always out.
Probably not be too much traffic other than the residence in that area anyway, do you, probably?
No, no.
No, just the people that doesn't.
Yeah.
I think most people that are, that use that are gonna probably keep going fifteen.
Right.
Even though it says twenty-five, it ain't like someone from Walfer's gonna come in and dive in on.
They got no reason to come through there.
On route.
That's what I'm saying, nobody should be going in.
No.
It's so curvy, you're gonna go faster than anyone.
So the Russian food.
Yeah, motion to set all town's speed limits to twenty-five and keep the business days strict at twenty in the part of.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, uh, city code, chapter one sixty-five point two nine. Yes, with yours? Yep, so this came about on a building permit, um, that, I'm sorry, a fence permit. That I couldn't find a fence permit for, um, and in speaking, when I first started speaking with Johnson County. They obviously don't need to do, come to Swisher to do fence permits unless it's over a certain height. So I created a fence permit, kind of quickly, but then found the inconsistencies in number five on page eight eighty-one and then fourteen on page eight eighty-two. In that, when located within a, you know, a street intersection or a corner lot. One says thirty feet from the intersection and the next page says yards of visibility is twenty-five feet, so. I think in talking with Tim on this, the city engineer, it should be, number five should be amended to say twenty-five feet. And then, um, any fences higher than the, than the requirements listed in five aren't really a special exception, that goes. And, and board of adjustment here, special exceptions and variances, but you're, you're not seeking a special exception, you're, you would be seeking a variance to the height restriction, so I think that needs to be cleaned up. Yeah, just those two sections, so I, I did give you a recommended, amended. How it would come back to you in, in an ordinance form if you so felt those changes. Questions for Shelley?
Motion to approve recommending in the code, chapter one sixty-five point two nine, as Shelley has it presented here.
I really don't, I really don't need a motion, once it, sorry, once it, just to review these, I just wanted to know if you were okay with them. Um, it will come back in ordinance form, and so that way you'll see those three readings.
That will be a motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, um.
But you guys are okay with her moving forward, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Um, and just if you're okay with the fence permit, I'd really like to see that approved by the council tonight, so we can start making sure that, you know, we're getting one from everyone when we need to, and that's at any time anyone. I, I, city code one sixty-five fourteen does say, no building or other structure shall be erected without a permit there court issued by the zoning or building administrator, but I think just for lack of confusion on everyone's part. If you approve the fence permit, then everybody knows, yes, anytime a fence is being put out, you have to get a fence permit.
So. Second.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that will make our life easier. Alright, uh, current fees, this is awesome. Yeah, um, so there, I, I'm not saying, you know, council, it's up to you whether or not you wanna charge, right now a building permit fee is twenty-five dollars for a fence permit. But if you choose not to, either way, I, I just wanted to review these with you. So currently, obviously Johnson County handles all of the building permitting, so they're, they're gonna charge their fees. And then we just charge a twenty-five dollars, um, it's kind of like a paperwork fee, we do issue a permit from the city of Swisher. Uh, and that's for new buildings and additions. Uh, work within the right of way permit fee is twenty, or easement is twenty-five dollars. A rezoning application is a hundred and fifty dollars. An appeal, which is either to seek a special exception or a variance to the board of adjustment, is one hundred dollars. And then you see my notes from when I talked to Johnson County on there.
What do you think the city that does that?
I'm sorry?
What's it say? Only city.
A building?
Oh, only a city building permit.
Yep, permit is required on any non-commercial building or structure, two hundred square feet or less. That's in our own city code, and then they have to go through Johnson County on fences if over seven feet. So if, if a special, or I'm sorry, if a variance is granted, then they would have to go to further through Johnson County. And then our peddler's permit fees, I think are, you might as well not even be charged, but that's just my opinion. Park rental, some of these were kind of hard, so you see my handwriting on top of Tanya's. Park rental right now is twenty and that does include the concessions, the ball diamond, um, only a twenty-five dollar fee if the lights are used. And then down further, I figured out that they say the sale of an alley. And I believe what she had written was three hundred dollars for half the alley and six hundred dollars for whole alley. Because I think there was some discussion not too long ago about vacating something. And the city said no, but you do have fees set, so. I believe that there should be fees set for annexation requests, which there is not right now, and that is a ton of work and a ton of postage in it, yeah. And also flat reviews, um, I believe, there are, there is nothing for those either, and, um, that too is a lot of groundwork. Right now, I believe the city requires, I, I always get it wrong, um. Them separately, right, the preliminary and the final separately, although Johnson County allows them together.
Right.
So.
With a revision after the site plan.
Yep. Yeah, so I really feel like maybe we could set fees separately to match Johnson County. And then also if something comes in together, and, and I've done that at, at a different city, you know, it might have been like two hundred, two hundred, if it comes in together, it's three hundred total. Or, you know, whatever you decide to, to set at. So that's just numbers. Our fees are drastically under what all the other small towns in here are. Just pulling up Solen's annexation, two fifty. Building permits start at seventy-five and go up to six thousand, depending on the size of the building. Plus inspection fees, plus super hookup fees, like, and we're charging twenty-five bucks. Like it's, we are losing money, but the amount of time that Shelley has to take to do all of this work, we should have boosted covering our cost. So I don't know if you just, you know, you want me to do some research, like, what the mayor just pulled up right there, I can do some research and get some, some.
But, but I think it would be a good idea.
Similar numbers to surrounding cities.
Because you're certain similar numbers surrounding communities. Roughly our size.
Sure.
Or what our size is gonna be, because it's gonna grow.
Right.
And.
Come back next meeting with the proposed, updated.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We obviously need to add a few more line items, I can tell you right now, you're not going anywhere in the state of Iowa if you're getting a right of way permit for twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, I agree.
Last one I paid this morning for Cedar Rapids was two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
For one hole.
Yeah.
Could that even be a work session?
Sure.
I mean.
Sure.
Good.
Instead of like us sitting here and.
No, I, I don't, I don't feel like you should.
No, no. Yeah, but I'm just saying like.
That should be staff, staff to come up with the research, bring you some.
She'll do it by the research.
But I'm just saying like, at a work session, let's throw that in there and we could sit down and just camera out, these are going to be, Francis.
Sure.
Good one to go on.
Yeah, I just, you know, again, wanted you to see this too.
Yeah.
And your peddler's permit is way too low, I mean, that's ridiculous, yeah, like I said, you might as well not even charge.
Two hundred and ten.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
Do we get any peddler's permits?
I think I've done one so far.
There's one that.
Yeah, the ice cream truck and, and the icy truck tended to just.
Gives me a headache every time it goes by.
I'm gonna press the air to do that.
You'll need it so fast.
It's like, you're saying like when Kona Ice comes through and all that?
That there's supposed to have a.
Yeah, there's Dan and Debbie's and.
Yeah.
I like street trucks.
I know Kona did it last year, so.
Does that mean that technically that does for, when we're speaking?
What's that?
The, those trucks like that.
Yeah, um, if they're, if they're, you know, going up and down streets, that's considered peddler. I know some cities adopt food, um, truck permits, so, you know, they sit at an event or in a parking lot of a city and, and that's a separate fee, so.
We get a newer truck, we just.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, you wanna make it, I'm not, I, I don't, you don't wanna make it so people won't do it.
I don't, yeah.
Right, or make it to cover our costs.
No. That's my whole thing.
It needs to be controlled.
I can tell you as, having three kids, my kids absolutely love when Kona Ice comes along.
Right, right.
So if we jack this up to where Kona Ice has screws to Swisher, I'm not gonna go for that.
Right.
I'll be honest.
Right, right. Yeah. They need to be reasonable.
Yeah.
No, but if it's twenty-five dollars for the year, okay?
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
You could.
Oh, I totally agree.
Somebody to pay for it.
That's a lot different than some dude trying to sell me windows or something.
A vacuum cleaner, door to door. Watch out for those vacuum cleaners. They get.
You have no idea, well.
Alright, so Shelley will dig into that and we will bring it back at another meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned at seven nineteen.